Welcome to the Council's scheduled business meeting.
I'll take the time to, there we go, for coming this evening. We do have a special presentation in just a minute, but before we do that, I'll ask the town clerk if she will call the role. President?
Here.
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 Okay, thank you, council members.
Member Behringer, at this time, who will lead us in our pledge of allegiance and also our indication. Stand if you can.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sheen.
Is it on? Okay. Father God, we come to you this afternoon, and we thank you for your goodness and your mercy, and we ask for your grace and your wisdom as we deliberate the issues that come before us tonight and help us to make the best decisions we possibly can for our town and the people who live here. And we ask for your special protection for our armed forces in the areas that they are called to serve, and we ask for help in the war in Ukraine, that that might come to an end before too much longer. Jesus' name, amen.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Behringer. So we'll move right into our agenda, and the first item usually is something we call petitions and comments. Ms. Gibson, do we have anyone sign up for petitions, comments this evening?
Yes.
Okay. So this is the time where we invite any of our citizens who might want to make comments to the council, not related to any agenda item. I'm not going to read the normal stuff, but is there any person who came here this evening with the idea of wanting to make a comment or petition to the council? Okay. Thank you very much. So we're going to move right along, council, to the adoption of the agenda. You have it before you. What is your pleasure?
Motion.
Okay, motion properly made in second. If you favor adopting the agenda, would you vote aye?
Aye.
No, and there is no opposition, so the agenda has been adopted. Always like it when we have a presentation at our meetings, and so that's the next item of business. So I believe our person of note is already here, and I'm going to recognize our guest, Mr. Paul Paget, I believe, who will make the initial presentation. Mr. Paget, if you will.
Good evening, Mayor and council members.
Evening.
Thank you all for joining us tonight as we celebrate Colleen's service with the town. It's almost 25 years total. She started as a part-time employee with the town in inspections in February of 1999. She transitioned to full-time in April of 2001, and since that time has served as a planning technician, permitting specialist, a senior development and permitting specialist, and in April of 2022, she was promoted to our development services specialist supervisor. Her team, that consists of three folks, herself, Kim and Megan, they were responsible for creating permits, organizing plans for review, verifying and collecting fees, issuing permits, scheduling inspections, and coordinating CO and certificates of compliance on all of our permits. Last month, as an example, they issued 211 permits. They scheduled and oversaw the inspections, 4,913, and we issued 136 COs. So they are a very busy little group. Colleen attended her first meeting of the North Carolina Permitting Personnel Association in 2001. Since that time, she remained an active member and served on the board in many different positions throughout her time. Colleen compiled the information and managed the distribution of monthly reports related to permit inspection numbers that are sent out to local, state government, and private development partners. She also played a vital role in the processing of home recovery funds for each of our residential permits that was issued. Colleen has always been willing to assist any local and state agency with permitting questions and best practice discussions. During her time here, she also volunteered for many town events. She was team captain for the Town's Relay for Life team. She also assisted with the United Way campaign in 2005. Colleen always makes us feel at home. On our birthdays, she would bring us a cake or a dessert that was our favorite, and she never missed it. She would facilitate the signing of a birthday card, and she would decorate our offices or our cubicles. She missed her warm smile and her cheerful laugh. If you'd come up, we've got a little something for you, Ms. Kim. Say something. Okay. I'll make her stand up there while I'm talking. This will be my last chance to embarrass her.
Yeah, so you heard a lot about the professional part of Colleen, but I want to talk about the person, Colleen. We got here around the same time, so, and she's always been very personable, very nice, always just so heartfelt, and just really cares about people and the people she's worked with. And I think that's evident by, she's a great friend, and it's evident by some of the people in this room. We've got some retirees here that came back for this moment. We've got Judy Bass, and we've got Tony over here, and anybody that can get Tony Chalk to come back to a council meeting must really be a special person, you know. So I think that says a lot about Colleen. So we really enjoyed having you here. Colleen did a lot for the inspections department as they evolved with the technology and all those different things, and as we grew, just making sure things ran smoothly with the permitting, and we're just, we're going to miss you, having you around. And I know Colleen, when COVID broke, she really cares about the family atmosphere here. The department is like a family, and so she was the first person to come to me and say, hey, when are we going to continue our holiday get-togethers, our holiday meal, the luncheon that we had? And so she was really eager to do that and have fellowship with her fellow coworkers, and that's just the type of person she is, and she always has, you know, done whatever it takes to just make it feel like home here. So appreciate it.
Thank you. Thanks. Very briefly. Thank you very much, and thanks for recognizing my service to the town. It truly has been my pleasure. When Sandy Teal hired me back in 1999, I knew nothing about construction, but I know a lot now, and thanks again.
Well, okay, hold on just for a minute here, Colleen. I think our council members may want to say a word or two, and the mayor certainly does, so I'll begin by thanking you for the time you've served. Let's see, are somebody else in the department going to make some presentation?
We've
Okay, well, here, let me recognize him first, okay? We'll go last, so come on up.
Thank you very much. It says, "Thank you for your many years of dedicated service to our citizens, staffs, and visitors of our fine state."
Yeah. So thank you, staff, and as I was saying, it's always a pleasure, I think, for any of the elected officials to be able to be a part of this kind of a presentation and to thank you for your many years of service. Our town has been blessed over the years with a number of folks who have retired, and it's always special when we can say sort of a bittersweet goodbye. We hope you won't leave us completely. Maybe you'll come back when you have an opportunity, some of these others have, but it certainly speaks well of your character and your dedication to the work. I guess one of the, in my mind at least, the way I will sort of remember you is some of the mornings when I come in, you're obviously already here. I get a wave across the glass enclosure there, so thank you for giving that welcome, sure enough. So at this time, I'm going to see if council wants to have a few words to say, and I'll start with Mr. Mathews down here.
And you're certainly going to be missed, but you know what? With your talents, and you're still such a young lady, that I'm sure there's a problem we can come back on a contract basis. I'm sure they'd love to keep you there, and so you can stay around your family a lot longer, so keep that in the back of your mind. I'm sure that could be worked out. So congratulations.
Singleton.
I think about Colleen, two things. There's one, is that smile. She's always smiling and her cheerful attitude, and that's very welcoming to people, and she's done that not only with the coworkers but also the citizens and the developers and so forth that you've had to serve. So congratulate you on your retirement. Although I know it sounds like a dangerous weekend when you and Ms. Bass have got something.
That smile, always, there's always. Who's been in there, happy or not happy, there's always a smile, and that's a big deal. It doesn't happen real often. We're going to miss that, and we're happy for you to move to the next stage of your life, but if you change your mind, we'll smile and take you back, okay?
Thank you for all your years of service and inspections as a public safety job, and your care for your coworkers extends out into the community with the work you've done. Yours is the kind of job, if you do it right, nobody knows you've done it right. So thank you and enjoy your retirement.
Congratulations to you, Colleen, and also for your 22.5 years of service, and I understand that your customer service was excellent, and that is so important when it comes to engaging with contractors and also with the public at large. So I know that you will definitely be missed, and I wish you a great retirement. I recently retired. It takes a little getting adjusting to it.
I hadn't heard.
You hadn't heard?
No.
Look, congratulations to you. You have a special guest here, right?
My husband.
Yeah, him.
My husband, John Doyle.
We typically recognize families when they come celebrate retirement with us, so we won't ask them to say anything unless you want to.
Please, yeah, absolutely. But the mayor will be happy to give you an excuse to leave at your leisure. Thank you very much. We have three items here. We'll begin with number one, and I'm going to recognize our assistant town manager, Mr. John Hodges, for the first item there. Mr. Hodges.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. We have two items on the agenda tonight that are related to the Tryon Point Housing Project that the council has heard about before, has approved, and has also contributed some resources for funding. The first item tonight is a resolution that is required for Wake County Housing Authority to issue bonds for the financing of that project, and Wake County Housing Authority has to have the concurrence of both the local municipality and Wake County to be able to issue those bonds. So that is the first item on the agenda tonight that we would ask for your approval of. Kristen Kirby with McGrier Woods, who is representing Wake Housing Authority, is here, and she'll be happy to come up to answer any questions or any additional information that you need about the first item.
So, council, you have the information.
Working this, cutting in and out, but, okay. So, yes, if they have any questions for John or for our other individual at this time, I think the manner is straightforward in my view, but any questions about John's information, Sherry, anybody? Okay, none, John? All right, all right, you're exactly right.
We've got Resolution 20232544, authorizing the financing by the housing authority of Wake County of affordable multifamily housing development within the boundaries of the town of Garner.
Second. Okay, hearing and seeing none. If you favor the motion as presented, would you vote aye?
Aye.
Any opposition, no, and it is unanimous. That is so ordered. So, John, you're going to deal with the second item there as well, right?
Yes, sir. Also related to the same project, is regarding a funding request to facilitate the project that we were
Also provided in your packet regarding some additional changes to the gap financing that is needed for the project. I'll ask, Tal Halbron with Kelly Development Corporation's going to come up. You've heard from him before with the project. We've asked him to come and give an overview of the request that is being made tonight, and I'm going to get his slides up here for him momentarily here. Okay, there you go.
Unfortunately, come to tonight in the midst of some challenging circumstances, not really specifically for the project, but for the affordable development community here in North Carolina. Over the last, really specifically, three months, there's been an interest rate increase that I think the community at large has felt to some degree because it's pushed 30-year mortgage rates to a level that is making it difficult for folks to buy homes. But in our context, in the affordable housing space, it makes it far more expensive for us to borrow, to finance privately the costs of building affordable housing developments. And as I think we've covered in previous meetings, and council is well aware, the nature of how we build, what we build, is such that we're committing to rent caps that makes these units affordable. And so in a market rate development, increases in rents could be used to average out increases in interest rates to size up permanent loans for projects. In our world, increases in interest rates just means less money to build. And so originally, back in November, December of last year, we really appreciated council supporting, approving $500,000 worth of ARPA funds, which paired with $4.96 million from Wake County, made the project work. The slide in front of you tonight is just a graphical depiction of what the increases in interest rates has done to the capital stack for the project. And so really, the big moving piece there is that blue rectangle, and as you see, the permanent mortgage proceeds have decreased to the tune of about $3 million, and that's created this, call it $3.1 million gap that the project has. Our request tonight, and we recognize it's an insignificant one, is for council to consider an extra $250,000 investment in the development, and that, paired with, Wake County is digesting, and I would say confidently pending Garner's subsequent approval of another quarter of a million dollars, are looking at a million and a half dollar investment. The remainder of that gap would come from us as a developer not taking developer fee out of the project, which is what's necessary to move this forward. And so our hope is that there's a recognition from council that we also, as the development team, have some significant skin in the game and are very, very focused on breaking ground on this project and bringing these affordable units to the community. Do you want to flip to the next slide? We recognize that council's quite committed to seeing affordable development happen here in the town, but as we think about the, what would be $750,000 loan to the development as just a financial investment, looking at the interest paid on the loan, the repayment of principal after 30-year term following construction, but probably most importantly, the fact that this project will pay all the same tap and impact and permit fees than any other market rate development would, it generates a return that we think is something that isn't insignificant. And so the hope is that, our ask is that Garner continue its support of the project, and happy to answer any questions, and I'll say this is the last place I was hoping to find myself three months before a ground break, so.
Mr. Vance, to see if he has any questions. Mr. Dellinger.
A strong advocate for housing affordability and workforce housing, so impressed that they're willing to step up and help in this gap that has emerged from the interest rate situation, and I think it's important to move forward. I think that so few developers want to do anything with us with regards to workforce housing or affordable housing. We're willing to help as best we can, and so we're glad you've stepped up. So good luck.
Thank you. I think we're across the county. I think there's a particular level of excitement to partner with local municipalities that are also using their own resources, and so much of their continued support for the project stems from the commitment that the town of Garner has already made and hopefully will continue to make tonight. So thank you.
Go right here.
Project, particularly because it's focusing on an area that is needed within our communities, and it's one that's very hard to fill when it comes to affordable housing for all the great teachers and firefighters and everyone else, police, who need affordable housing within the area. So I support this endeavor. Just want to let you know that.
And Mr. Singleton.
No specific questions. I do appreciate the detailed information, but of course, the scan labor.
Thank you very much.
It's interesting that the workforce housing, I was talking to some people about a week ago, and said, way out of the area, just to find somewhere to stay, and so workforce housing is, and a lot of these were like policemen, teachers, firemen, and a lot of these were like policeman, teachers, firemen. And I think this is a great opportunity, and that'll put our foot in the door in doing our part. So, salute you for bringing it back. And it's a sign of the times, everything's gone up. And there's a big article in the paper today about apartment complexes, it's unbelievable, NNO, about a little greater Raleigh area. And, you know, you think it slowed down a little bit, but they can't build them fast enough because people haven't made alternative choices to wait and see what happens with the economy. So, but I do support it and hope we can move this project forward. It'd be good for Garner.
You've heard the council speak to the issue, and I'm convinced we're going to do the right thing in just a moment. So, unless, any other questions? That'll be off. Anything else, John?
The only thing I was going to add, Mr. Mayor, for anyone who may be listening tonight but may have not heard previously about this project, one of the reasons that I believe the council chose to support it in the beginning, and one of the reasons that staff is coming forward with a recommendation for additional support is this is a very unique project for Garner. It is the only place that has been identified within the town limits in which this type of funding mechanism can be utilized to provide affordable housing. So, it's a unique opportunity for the town. And I just wanted to repeat that for anyone who may be listening that may not know the back, the history on that and the backstory on that, that it's a very unique project for us and a very unique opportunity that will likely be our last one for this particular type of funding mechanism.
Properly before you at this time is a motion, a recommendation to consider financing moving from 500,000 to 750,000. Is there a motion? Okay, motion made by Mr. Vance, seconded by Ms. Behringer. Any other question, comment before we vote? Hearing none. If you favor the motion before you, would you vote aye? There's any opposition, no. And there is none. So, the manner is so ordered. And thank you, council, and thank you, John, for the presentation. Okay, yes. Thank you, sir. Okay. The next item of business is item three. And I'll recognize Mr., let's see, is Mr. Trezenberg here? Yeah, there he is. Garner Forward Comprehensive Plan Mapping Edits. Good evening, sir.
The microphone. I will call up the memo. And just to recount for everyone, Mr. Nooncaster was here with you at your last work session meeting to go over the edits to the text of the Garner Forward Comprehensive Plan. And we also have this memo that was presented to the Planning Commission as part of their consideration for some map amendments, or map edits, I should say. And going back and forth with Matt as to how best to capture these, it wasn't very easy within the document itself to do so. So, I offered to go ahead and kind of create a little side-by-side comparison between version one and what's in versions two and three. And a lot of these were ideas that were collected over time and then also contributed by some staff members. Mr. Godfrey and Mr. Bamford had both done some looking through the document and made some suggestions. And so, we have those here for you tonight. The objective would be to just get a final list of which ones of these you would like to keep, and if there's any that you would like to change or modify or get rid of, and then get those to Mr. Nooncaster so he can do one final round of edits and hopefully have this available for you all to potentially act on at a meeting in October. So, with that being said, the memo, we tried to put in notes as to what I could recall folks mentioning about reasons why might consider these edits. But I'm happy to go through any of them individually and talk about them further. But again, we're just looking for feedback, again, as to whether you would like any of these removed or modified so that we can get these back to Mr. Nooncaster for the final round of edits.
Review those. And I believe, maybe you already said this, I believe the Planning Commission, did they sign off on the ones that we have here?
Their feedback on was this one right here, which is item number three. There was some debate as to how far to shift, where to place this one, actually. There's a couple of different locations where there's some fairly good acreage left, where you could have kind of a neighborhood activity center node here along Old Stage. And this is Woodland Road. Vandora Springs is down here. We had originally, you'll see, let me put, oh, that's not going to work because I'm not in PowerPoint. Further down Old Stage, near Swift Creek, you had the old food line site. But that was pretty much all you could fit on there was the food line and maybe a couple of side tenants. That's now been bought by the county. So, that probably was not going to be really enough to constitute a good neighborhood center anyhow. But that was their only suggestion, was maybe this needed to go a little further south. So, we did move it to the south side of Woodland Road, but kept it kind of between the existing... There's a commercial industrial park right here. So, it's kind of between there and Woodland Road is where Matt decided to settle. But that was the one that we had some feedback from them.
Not this moment.
Daniel.
So, if we can step through, so, all the changes here were made between the public hearing and the Planning Commission meeting. Is that correct? And are these all of the sort of parcel level and map changes that have been made since the public hearing? So, there have not been any after Planning Commission? This is the totality of all those changes? Okay, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Behringer, anything? Mr. Singleton?
How far in the weeds now do we want to get here? I mean, we've got a project that's, you know, on delay or hold right now, which is right in this area. And... Let's talk about number three. Why would I put anything at Old Stage Road and Woodland Road? I mean, pick one side or the other, because there's 540 coming down, you're going to have development down there. And it should be on 401, it shouldn't be on Old Stage Road. I mean, 401's planned to be three lanes, super speedway, whatever it's going to be, highway, byways, whatever. And that's where this should go. I would never think we would put it on the intersection of Woodland Road and Old Stage Road. I'm just, it says that, you know, land at Old Stage and noted of Endor Springs and Old Stage, land constrained. I'm assuming that means, you said the county bought that parcel. Okay, so that takes care of that. I mean, you know, I look at, and everything can go down towards 540. Why would it stop right there in the middle? I'm just thinking, I don't have, I don't see any reason why there should be anything at Woodland and Old Stage. No one's going to build anything there. With a two-lane road and a dead end and Woodland intersection on the dead end, I'm sorry, a T-intersection, I'm just sitting here thinking, nobody's going to put anything there. I mean, they can either go on the main highway, or they can go down toward 540. We had the food line project, as you talked about, and then years after that, we approved one at 1010 and Old Stage, another grocery store, which is long gone. But with, you know, when 540 opens, all of that makes sense. I'm just wondering why we're even considering putting anything at the intersection of Old Stage and Woodland. That just makes it like a waste of time. That's Gray's opinion, but I just don't see that at all.
Is that didn't really have any kind of neighborhood service potential close by? And it's close as relative, obviously. But that was just one area that kind of jumped out to staff as, well, you know, maybe there's something that could be there. Doesn't necessarily have to be grocery store anchored. It could be like a pharmacy anchored or something where there could be a little more defined collection of truly neighborhood services. So, it's not the level of a, you know, neighborhood is not the level of a community activity center. It's the smallest of the activity centers. Now, that being said, in our typologies, we do still have room for kind of one-off neighborhood office, neighborhood commercial uses to be in residential settings with the long-range plan. So, we could rely on that. But again, we're just kind of looking to see where there might be an opportunity to fill some gaps, where there was some land assemblage that could happen. And because there was some history before, and we knew it wasn't going to happen there, again, just trying to kind of look at how many residences potentially there could be in the future and trying to give something a little more feasible for folks maybe who live nearby to walk or to get to some of these services. Something maybe a little more along the lines of a Nevers Borough Square, but on this kind of road setting instead. Old Stage is going to be a, I know we keep going back with DOT on this, I think it's, are they pushing four lanes now? Yeah. So, there, we had it as a three-lane section. They're now pushing for it to be a four-lane section. So, yeah. And again, keep in mind, this is also a document that captures things way out. This may not be a five-year horizon kind of thing. But you also don't know when situations may change. Water and sewer comes when you don't expect it. So, that was just kind of the thought behind it. But I don't feel strongly one way or the other about some of these. I think you can capture some non-residential uses and more of a walkable either way. But...
There. So, I mean, you had a walkable thing, and it's there. And I just, and that's on a, you know, four-lane timber. So, I just, I think, nobody's going to put anything there. I mean, I've just been, I mean, they might one day, but, you know, if we live to see Woodland Road get to four lanes, it'll be, we'll be stunned to see that happen. Pardon? Pardon? Old Stage, I mean, Old Stage, I'm sorry. If I said Old, I'm sorry. Yeah. See, we just get Woodland resurfaced, which Ms. Behringer did a fine job in doing and helping to get done. Woodland Road, they got resurfaced. You put a lot of time in on it. Thank you for the compliment there. I just, I just wonder, the question, Jeff, the one about the project that we're currently, that's currently on hold, is, heck, am I here? You know, I've gone down too far. Yes. So, I'm sitting here thinking, we've had a public hearing, and people told us what they don't want somewhere. And here, we're talking about putting something somewhere where people told us they don't want there. So, you know, I look at here and think, okay, you did move it. It's a little something further south, but it's still right there. I mean, something, I mean, it's all in the same area. So, people told us they didn't want something, but we're talking about putting something in the plan. I just shake my head and think, okay. I don't want, I'll be quiet.
I will say, sitting there the other night, I did hear some people say at the, at one point, they're like, oh, well, then it should just all be commercial. So, you know, again, this was all put together before we had that kind of feedback. And again, I think it was just, in this area, you're either all the way up at North South Station, which is geared for a much different kind of service area. And with the growth along the 401 corridor, there's probably, you know, a potential to get some more neighborhood service, again, kind of uses outside of those big magnets that kind of now both ends at 1010 and 401 and way up at North South Station. So, that was just kind of the thinking behind that, was again, to try to promote some non-residential a little closer to some of these neighborhoods.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Matthews.
Yes, sir. The Woodland, that one threw me a loop, too. It's, if you've ever been through there, it's just... Thing, I could see it being a lot better off down around the 1010, Old Stage Road, because we know just as soon as that southern loop opened, that whole place is going to explode down there. And there's a lot of talk about four-laning, some of the Old Stage Road. I've not seen anything in writing, but they're looking at doing some things as well as some intersection positives. So, I could see it being better off there. And the other one on 401, if you, one Gray was just telling me, if you pop that one back up there. If it looks like it's about where the Midway Church is, somewhere down in that general area. Of course, there's a lot of housing development growth all done. And I could see it more so down there near that Midway area versus across from where the Par 3 golf thing was. And, because that's going to be, up that way is going to be a tough, traffic as tough as is. But down that way near the Midway area with all that development, I could see it being a more positive down in that area. It's just my two comments.
Yeah, so we did move, we did move that one, again. There's not a large collection of acreage really left that's on 401. So, we did move that one just a little further south. So, you're seeing that one here. So, then, too, that also kind of put this area further, further away. And again, just kind of looking at how many units there could be in the future, it just seemed like an area that might warrant a couple of neighborhood service areas. But in reference also to Old Stage, we do have a community activity center, which would be a little bit bigger at 1010 and Old Stage. So, that, again, just trying to kind of look for some other opportunities outside of these larger shopping centers to give a little focus to, but we don't have to.
Thank you.
Mr. Vance on my right. Anything? Okay. Mr. Dellinger, anything else?
Issues. But since we're on the 401, number two, you know, we have three different things we're measuring, this character, typology, the development and change intensity. So, there are all these different elements that are going in. So, one, it might say neighborhood. On the other, it's going to say, we need to increase this. And then, we're going to throw a dot on top of it that also does something else. My concern with the 401 crossing project is that even on our existing land use map, that's parks and recreation space in the land use map. And I still, still don't understand the jump and the impetus for that when that's what the previous land use plan was. I think it came to surface during that meeting with the observation by a lot of the residents of the lack of recreation in that part of the town. And so, to switch that future vision for that space, to have so little open space with whatever development comes in. So, again, and the other part is, these changes coming in after the public hearing, the public has not had an opportunity to have input on these, this minute level of change. So, on this property, so for every one, it's sort of, were the property owners that it affects aware of this change? Or did they make the request? Did they make it after? I mean, but this is the questions on the transparency piece. And when it changed, were the other property owners who may have looked at the public hearing version said, oh, this is wonderful. This, I think this is the way it should be. Then they wake up six months later, and all of a sudden, it's, there's a neighborhood activity center planned in their backyard, and we're not sure if there's a project associated with it. So, that's one of my questions for each of these are, in these areas, are there projects in the pipeline in those change areas? Because I think that's important for us to know. Because I think that's important for us to know, but it's also important for the public to know that it's either we're trying to change the direction of where land use has materially changed in terms of opportunity, or whether there's a project out there that's driving it that may not be in line with what the public wants. So this is a 401 project. So that's what I'm, again, when things change is important and what's driving that change. And for this one, I think, you know, the project will come back. It's got challenging open space issues and that is in contrast and conflicts with the current land use. And I'd hate to see us adopt something that's advancing what the public has said they don't want. So that's my comment on that one. Yes, please.
One of the things that the staff was looking at back in that time was the availability of water and sewer service. At that time, we did not foresee water and sewer service coming to this area anytime soon. The Georgia's Landing Project changed that. So sometimes there's very significant changes of conditions. So our focus back then was if we weren't confident that, you know, there was something major going to shift things, was to not make things potentially inconsistent. That being said, there is a park search area up in this area. The part here that was purchased by the town through the joint effort of the Conservancy fits in that same area. So there has to, you know, we're going to have to make a decision as to, is that enough for that area or do we want some more? But then there is another park search area here in the far south portion as well. So we've been, you know, wrestling with that as well for that. But that's what I would just offer as history for why the current plan is the way it is. And that being said, in the grand scheme of things, I don't know other than maybe up, particularly around the Auburn-Nightdale-Rock Quarry Road area, that we've had a whole lot of questions or comments about this map in particular. So, again, I think it just comes down to how much, how much do you want to encourage the non-residential component? Like I say, we've kind of built in this graduated system all through the documents that it can happen anywhere. It's just to the amount of, would you like to see it? But again, just because it's here in this document, when time comes for the proposal, that's always going to be your reasonableness check and we don't know what's going to change between now and then. So this, a guide, but. I understand what you're saying.
Value of land, to do a park search area around 1010 Road and 401, I don't think makes any sense anymore. We'll never get any, our hands on any of the land down there. So when you're talking about the parcel we purchased with Wake County, there's actually a way to bridge that property with this property. I mean, there's a physical across the, I'm not sure what the name of the road is. But so again, there's a creativity opportunity, creative opportunity to be creative with what the intent was at the time. So the other question I had was on number four, which is, I believe is the, really the project we just, the Affordable Housing Project. And so I guess my question was, how does the project that's going there fit with this particular recommendation for higher intensity when it's, most of that land's taken up by that project?
Off of it, kind of adjacent. So again, with these neighborhood activity centers, you do kind of envision that there will be, or there could be some residential component. That residential component should be denser and be walkable hopefully to the service area. So that's why it was kind of positioned adjacent to it on some land just to the south and east of it. Because we do have Tryon Road eventually connecting through Anne Creach. And this was probably one of the bigger areas of town where we just didn't have any kind of, unless folks come, are coming to downtown, which is good, we want them to, but to have another place where you could have, again, those kind of neighborhood commercial services seemed like this was kind of a node that was emerging because of, again, some of these changing conditions. That happened to be, I think, some of the reason behind our recommendation for that apartment project even going where it was going, because of those, that road intersection. So this was envisioned to kind of support that and augment that to help, help those folks hopefully have somewhere that they can walk to, to get their, maybe there's going to be a laundromat there or a veterinarian clinic, but something that they could walk to.
And then number five, it's that Auburn, I think I understand what's going on here. I just wanted to be sure. So that is the Burnett, is that the Burnett Farms project where the yellow dot has been added? Okay. Yep. Okay. That's what I, the map's hard to read without road, street names on it. I have trouble.
This was a council decision previously and there was concern about making sure that this, there would be some non-residential component on that corner. So again, being that there wasn't really much geared for neighborhood kind of level services, not that neighborhood services can't be incorporated and absorbed by a larger community activity center, but to go ahead and add that so that we have that kind of captured in this document.
Or the regional with it being right off of 540.
And then also looking at the amount of acreage that was available, because I think there was like maybe 10, not that 10 acres is small, but 10 acres for a grocery store kind of anchored thing would be reasonable. But trying to keep the higher intensities a little closer to the interchange that might be more car oriented, but give this an opportunity to, again, have some walkability for the apartments next door.
Intensity and impact. And I'd hate for the opportunities to be missed and then whatever next council's making the decision be bound by this sort of lower intensity off of interstate. And I think when you drive around the triangle, you can see the level of intensity that's being done off of the interstates. And so I think we want to be ambitious in what we're signaling, I guess.
4A, so we're encouraging, again, that three to five story. So that neighborhood center may have a different look and feel to it than one that's only kind of at a, hey, we're going to keep it kind of in the one to three story kind of level. So again, looking at all the maps combined will kind of help us fine tune what each one ultimately looks like.
You've got like super high intensity, but then you've got a low intensity neighborhood center dot on it. And so as a developer, as a town, do we want to say we're defaulting to the more intense use? Like what are we signaling when a developer comes to us about what our expectations are?
Differentiate a neighborhood activity center differently. This might be an area where we do see some live work units where there's the businesses down below. Or you might see something a little more like a Lafayette Village, where you've got commercial on the ground floor, but some office spaces on the second floor. Whereas in an area that's only coded to strengthen in blue, that might be more just purely more of a horizontal kind of mix and that would be how they would differentiate, I think, is how we're looking at it. Because that's where, that's where the building types come in as well. So we'll rely on that.
When you're at your highest, most intense change in intensity, but then something else says, oh, only go three stories with that intensity. It doesn't, you know, particularly off of a major interstate. Those are the same. I just think the intensity around that 540 interchange should be much higher. Number 10 really caught my eye too, because that, that's the area, there was a project that had come before council last year, I believe, that Timber East Extension. Is that 10? And so it was, in the first version, that part, and remember that project, it was single family detached units and duplexes, no commercial. And the initial plan has a regional level, high intensity use, but now it's been, again, sort of downgraded to community activity center. And so, and I know the dot was moved up to White Oak, but that also doesn't make a lot of sense. So what was, with that part of timber and wanting to increase that intensity and other commercial, there are large tracks down there, it's eventually going to connect through. I know that was one of the issues we had with the project, was the low verticality and intensity. So this seems to go back to favoring that kind of development in that spot.
So when we were looking at this one, the retail activity center kind of functions more as like your power shopping center. So honestly, we didn't really feel like that one was capturing the verticality very much because it was coded as a retail, as opposed to a, say, a TOD, the transit center. So we felt like the community activity center was the better choice for working with the higher building heights that we were looking for in that area. Because again, that's, you know, you think about, we have that at 1010 and 401, we have that at 540 and Rock Quarry. These are the places that do tend to be a little more intense. Thinking about it, I do kind of wonder, we geared the transit centers a little more to the bus rapid transit or the commuter rail. That's not to say that it couldn't work on a regular bus line. And this would be an area where we have talked about as Timber Drive East builds out to extend the Route 20 service through there. So that might be a possibility if y'all are leaning that way, that we could assign that perhaps a T.
And that area down there is level 4B and 4A, it's not 4C. And with the traffic problems in that area along White Oak Road and Timber Drive and with the other development that's going to occur across from White Oak on the large track, getting those extra modes of transportation, like those bus lines going down, Timber Drive East is perfectly situated to handle that kind of added bus traffic. So again, I just think where we can put infrastructure, transportation infrastructure, even if it's bus infrastructure, we should concentrate, you know, that intensity and that verticality there. Because again, the project that came before was just flat as, you know, anything else you'd see in town. And I don't think we want to invite that back. So that's just the other, another area I would try to, again, encourage, since we have the transportation ability, you know, changing some stuff around, to have some super dense, because there are very large tracks down that way, single, like 20 and 30 acre tracks. So it's kind of primed for those kind of opportunities. I'll pass for now if anyone has any other comments. Thank you.
Mr. Singletary, anything, Father?
At the very bottom of the left, we talk about future program park. I mean, you know, parkland is, in this area nowadays, you get, you have three things, you're going to have a willing seller, a willing buyer, and a way to pay for it. And that's not, you know, putting the dots on the, in the Park and Rec Master Plan, I know you have to do that, but where you put the dots and where you end up with parkland, a lot of times it just doesn't work out because the cost of the property may be so high. So that piece we did with Wake County and the city of Raleigh worked out nice. I think Mr. Downer's comments about how it could connect to the other property or does connect to the other property for additional park, you know, that's something to think about. But anyway, I'll be quiet.
I think one of the things that Matt has been very aggressive is too strong of a word, but is if we know we need park facilities in a certain location, when a developer comes in wanting to do a project, that we're working to create something that works for both of us. And I think, again, we've said before, verticality works to create more open space and opportunities. So, well, we might not, and kind of going back on what I said earlier too, even though we can't buy the land, at least we're targeting it to know we want to have some type of recreational capacity there, so.
We are sending all of these projects, I mean, it used to just be that the Parks and Rec Director would look at it and give us feedback, but now we're actually sending it to the Parks and Rec Committee. We don't always have to take fee and lieu. We can insist on dedication. So I think, yes, the bigger projects are going to be more successful at that and absorbing it. But we can always, this will help us kind of dictate or at least take a lead, get some direction on, okay, when, when will a project should be, really be pushing for that dedication as opposed to the fee and lieu.
It's about the size of my pocket and they're just really not effective. Even for a dog park, some of them are so small, I mean, they're not, you know, we've got them coming in, it's been smaller than this room. And that's just, and if you have three, four hundred units, you need something more than that or you need multiple ones, not just one. So probably trying to max out what they've got, but, I mean, what we've talked about in this plan is, it's stated, vertical and more green. Go up a few stories and then, but have more green space. And this, you know, the picture that we showed last week when Mr. Newkest was here, you know, we can do that or we just can talk about it. So, anyway. Something else.
Ultimately, as I understand it, the act.
Did it go again?
Oh, okay. Excuse me. Mr. Matthews.
I'm good.
Wasn't trying to ignore you, sir. I know you said, yeah, okay. So, I mean, ultimately, the action that was requested, is requested, is that this council consider a motion as to which mapping edits to keep for inclusion in the final document editing. Am I correct on that, Mr. Trezenberg? Okay. And we would identify these by the, I guess, the signification that's in the, that's in the packet. Beat two and three and those kinds of things, is that right?
But that North Garner project doesn't have any sort of designation at all as to being a community or neighborhood center. And it's one of the largest assemblages in the town. That seemed like an odd omission. That seemed like an odd omission.
I'm not seeing it at the parcel level. Down, you know, because the downtown's kind of elongated and the circle doesn't always capture it. I mean, we certainly could. Again, I think there, again, you would have the latitude, even though it's residential, to accept some non-residential component to it, still without it. But that's just a matter of preference.
It was an interesting omission. Except we're either in the pipeline or other, and, and they sort of had a designation as having sort of this, wanting to include the commercial. That, that was just a question. And the other, last question I have was on the area around Joan Sausage and Therington Road, and it seems to have, like, on the development and change intensity, it's like a blue level, which is like enhanced, but then it's also listed as like an employment center. And so, again, that's sort of one of those conflicting expectations or something, and I'm not quite sure if, if it was intentional, or if it was just kind of, again, there's so many move-in pieces.
For that area, and I think they kind of envisioned that as more of a max kind of three-story situation. If we're envisioning something different now that would be more multi, you know, pushing four or five stories or more, then we would want to change that. Like, the employment ones are quite often, I've noticed, geared, kind of like the retail, where they're envisioning something lower, not taller.
Concerned me as a change that's happened from the previous plan to this one is that the employment center seems to be less, it's campus focused, but it's campus focused in a non-mixed-use way. It's more of a traditional office park way, and that doesn't lend itself to, it's not described in our, this current plan as being high-density vertical. That's where the activity center, we're kind of depending on somebody to come in and, and tell us that's what they want to do instead. So I don't know, that, I, I'd like to see, again, the area is near the interstate, to go up as high as they can, they're not next to, I mean, that one's sort of next to a neighborhood, but you could configure it in such a way. That's my only comment. I, I think it's a lot to put into a motion, so it might make more sense to redraft and, and, comments, because it's a lot.
Taking what I've heard here tonight. Just trying to, trying to save Matt a little bit from having to, to do too many more edits on his end, because he has done more already than what, what we really initially. So, yeah, but I'd be happy to do that for you for the next one.
Okay. Well, council, you've heard the exchange between Mr. Dellinger and Mr. Trezenberg regarding the step moving forward. So if that's the sense of the council, it seems reasonable to me if it's not taxing your department to have to, okay.
You know, again, to get you to an adoption point, you know, my, my biggest thing is, is, again, just to reiterate, it's a guide, it's a snapshot of that guide in time. There's always going to be the reasonableness argument that you all will have to decide on when individual cases come to you. So I, I do, I know some communities struggle with even getting these adopted because they span multiple years, and things are changing in real time while you're doing that, and you just never get to the point of having something. And there's so much good in this document that admittedly, we've already started using, we want to continue to use, but if it's gonna, you know, if it were to become, you know, a two-year thing, then we're kind of like, okay. How much, how much can we really, you know, be pushing this before it's adopted? So, you know, it's just a, it's a balance. But, yeah, I think we still have October kind of loosely on the horizon right now, so coming back with this on September 19th for, for a quick update and for y'all to look at and republish it again, that's just fine.
Okay. Council, you've heard Mr. Trezenberg's statement of what he can do, what he will do. Any further comment on that? I mean, I'm inclined to suggest that that's a reasonable action from tonight until then, anyway. Anybody in agreement? Okay. I believe there's consensus on the council for that, Mr. Trezenberg, and we look forward to the next iteration.
Have committed a lot of time, effort, and both in meetings and outside of, so we greatly appreciate it. I think I closed it. Hold on a sec.
I'm sorry about that.
That's all right. I think I can open it again real quick.
It'd be nice, I know we've got it really zoomed in specifically here, but when we see this as a whole to capture, if those, without really making it complex, to have those little dots placed where you're talking about, say, we can sit back and look at the big picture is what I'm looking for, as we're looking at it right here, like the 401, if we mentioned up Creech Road and that area up in there, places we've talked about that we can set back, set a good bird's eye view of where we're going with all of this.
On this map, also. Oh, no, that's, um, one more I'm looking for. There we go. I could also superimpose them on this one. I can't do all three together. Sure. Sure. Yeah. If that, if that would be helpful, I can do that. It might be hand-drawn, but if I can do it a little nicer than hand-drawn, without too much trouble, I will. But, okay.
That's all, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
I guess we'll look to hear back from you when, when you're ready, okay? All right, thank you very much. By my estimation, we have completed our agenda down through Item J. So at this point in time, I'll ask if there are any committee reports to be shared.
We'll be meeting this month to.
Filling, filling the current vacant positions on the Board of Adjustments, Planning Commission, and also the Senior Citizens Advisory Committee. Just want to make the council aware of that.
Thank you, Mr. Vance and Mr. Dellinger, who are working diligently on any number of persons to interview and so forth. I'm going to recognize at this time the manager, who will share with us any manager report.
First one is a community meeting to update the public about the South Garner Greenway project, and that will be held on Tuesday, September 12th, from 4:00 to 7:00 at the White Deer Nature Park. It's an open house format, and the design team from Withers Ravanell will be in attendance. Wake County will also be in attendance with an update on the progress of design for the Swift Creek Greenway that will eventually connect Lake Benson and Lake Wheeler. The next, September 12th, Tuesday, September 12th, 4:00 to 7:00.
There's a note to that, the letters went out, a matter of fact, I received one this week, of all the property owners affected potentially by this, announcing this, what he just shared with everybody. I know I personally got one, so I know, and I know the homeowners group out where I'm at, they're going to pass that on to everybody, so have a good attendance and get all their questions answered.
And it's an open house format, but Jody or John, do you know if there will be any type of presentat, set presentation in any of those during that time period at all?
I have a pass card.
Oh, I didn't, I didn't know you were in there.
The room, sort of showing the, the design, where the path would be, some of the issues along the path, and some sort of renderings of how the path could potentially look like. So there's not a set time for a presentation, but the designers will be there, sort of answering questions and kind of explaining the path to the, to those who attend the meeting.
Thank you.
Resources, they will host the Festival Latino this Friday, September 8th, at the Garner Recreation, Garner Recreation Center grounds from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m. And it will feature performers, food trucks, and kids' activities. The kickoff for Big Garner's, can't read tonight, the kickoff for Garner's Big Reed project is this Thursday, September 7th, at 5:30 at the Southeast Regional Library, just across the parking lot. This project is a partnership between the GPAC Garner Performing Arts Center and the library, and is funded through a grant from the National Endowment for the Arts and Arts Midwest.
You said what? I'm sorry.
September 7th, 5:30. And the last item is Public Works Department will be hosting an electronics recycling event Saturday, September 16th, from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the Public Works Complex located at 610 Ran Mill Road. This is a free drop-off for, for all electronics. Public Works reminds residents that appliances, for example, microwaves, heaters, and window A.C. units are not considered electronics and cannot be collected at this event. So I would, I would suggest go to the website, the Garner website, for more information about what's, what can be collected. And I have one more event here. Going to celebrate the 100th anniversary of the Garner High School building, which houses the Garner Performing Arts Center, by coming out for a free concert by the Soul Psychedelic Orchestra on Saturday, September 16th, from 3:00 to 7:00. Food trucks will be on site. The Garner Area Historical Society will have a booth at the event. Also, in honor of this important date, the Garner History Museum at the Depot will be open that day from noon to 5:00 with a special exhibit. This exhibit will also be on display at the museum on September 9th and September 13th from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. That concludes the announcements I had.
Anybody down here, down here? Okay, and the attorney, I believe you did not, or have any reports?
No report this evening.
Thank you. All right, let's go to council reports, and start on my left with Mr. Matthews.
Nothing this time, sir.
Okay, Mr. Singleton.
Nothing.
Ms. Behringer.
I think this is on, repainting the Town of Garner sign in front of Garner Rec Park. When is that scheduled to happen? It's, yes.
So we have ordered a new, it's supposed to be installed by the 21st.
Be installed.
All America City sign that looks mildewed on both sides, right in front of Garner Rec Park. What, what can we do about that? It's really unsightly when you're walking down the street.
And you referring to, that had white spots on it?
Gray spots on the white background.
Okay, so we'll double-check. I know we had some signs that were, needed to be cleaned over there, and we've addressed that.
They need to be repainted.
As well. Okay.
We have a house, a property on Benson Road, I couldn't see the house number very well. It's either 3027 or 2027, where the grass is getting close to waist, waist-high. In the past, it's been well cared for, but I don't know if the property has turned over or, or something's happened, but now there are more cars there, and there's a lot of tall grass there. It's about three houses south of the fire station on the same side of the road. And some good news this afternoon, I saw on the news that Joey Hopkins has been appointed Secretary of NCDOT. The current secretary is retired, and Joey has been, been appointed to that position, and he's always been reasonable to work with and, and gave you answers instead of excuses. So it's a good thing to hear. That's all, sir.
Thank you very much.
Yes. Yep, he's a local, he's a, he's a local person also. Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Dellinger?
Yes, just to help you do in there barbecue chicken this Friday, 12/11.
Plate and fixing, it is just chicken. The other is on September 17th, in the morning, around 8:30 or 9:00, we do a, there's a Cars and Coffee that has started in downtown. We've been doing it since the spring. John Blasco and Patrick Bird, Full Bloom, Full Bloom Coffee have kind of helped wrangle that together. We've had good turnouts for, we have old cars, new cars, exotic cars, and it's been really relaxing and chill, small people love it, and they come over and over again. So if you like cars, come downtown on Sunday morning on the 17th. That's all I got.
I have nothing for tonight. Invitation for Garner's recognition by the, the society is, Maria, help me out here.
Capital Area Preservation?
Yes, yes. Yes, recognizing the Garner Historic Depot Museum.
I think I'll let the town clerk know as soon as possible, she can give everyone a break.
Okay. Anything else, Ms. Gibson, on that? Okay. All right, that's all I have. We have.
One item before I just saw this.
Go ahead.
I'll have send this to Mr. Mercer, that's an article that's just come out here a couple hours ago, talks about the loss of tree canopy in all the towns in Wake County. Very interesting. I'll have her send that to, I'll have Mr. Mercer send that to everyone.
Okay. All right, thank you. We do have listed in the agenda packet a closed session, and Mr. Vance, our mayor pro temp, has also requested a closed session. I'll let him give the sites on those, so we can get that before council.
Sites are. 138.11a5 and General Statute, Section 143-138.11a6 for personnel matter.
Go in closed session based on those two items. Is there a formal motion?
So moved.
Okay, motion properly made and seconded. Okay, all in favor? Okay, all in favor of going closed session, would you vote aye?
Aye.
Okay, it's approved, and we will move from this area to our closed session room next door. Take a, take a moment or two, if you need a quick bathroom break or recess, and come right on into the closed session area if you will.
... establish process for completing that. So with that, I think all of our business has been concluded for tonight, so I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay, motion properly made and seconded. All vote in favor, vote aye.
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 Okay. Declared that this meeting of the governor town council has completed its business and the meeting is adjourned.